Okay, it's six o'clock. We're going to call to order the Franklin County Community School Corporation first preliminary determination hearing. First item on the agenda is for the board to hold a preliminary hearing on the proposed project. If you are interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure you have signed the sign-in sheet, which should include your name and address. After a presentation by the administration and its advisors, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. At the hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and that the topic be limited to the proposed project under consideration. The notice of this preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required. At this time, I will ask that Ms. Shannon New explain the purpose of this hearing.
Pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-20-3.1, a school corporation must hold two public hearings and adopt a resolution to preliminary determine to issue bonds or enter a lease for a project which has a total project cost in excess of certain thresholds. These public hearings and the future consideration of resolutions are the very beginning of the legal process. We note that no board action is legally required at this meeting. Rather, this hearing is solely to hear public comments regarding this project.
Thank you. We will now hear from Ms. Kendra Franks about the process of determining and communicating the project to the community and the need for the project.
So I-
Step up to the mics so the livestream can hear you. Please.
I'm actually going to introduce Mr. Matt Schumaker, who is our counsel from Seapole, and he's going to give a presentation about where we are in our debt capacity and what this will do, if any, with tax implications.
Good evening. Thanks, Shannon. Yeah, Matt Schumaker, Seapole. Nice to see you guys again. I am going to go through a short presentation to walk through the financial impact, or as you understand, the lack of financial impact in regards to tax rate for this proposed project, and happy to answer any questions that the board may have. So if we go to the next page, so the first thing we always look at is where the school corporation currently stand. So this shows your total tax rate. Your tax rate, as a reminder, is made up of your debt service fund and your operations fund. You add those two together, and you get your total tax rate. You can see the historical schools' tax rate has been at a dollar now for several years. So you can see from '25 to '26, there is a projected drop. This has been the case for the last several years, for the school corporations, kind of a continuation of what you guys have been doing the last few years. Gives you the flexibility to do projects such as the one we're here to talk about tonight and do so without increasing the tax rate. You can see that on the next page. Kendra, if you want to go to the next one for me. So this shows-
A $4.2 million borrowing, shows it being paid back in one year. That would keep the tax rate neutral, meaning the tax rate would not increase. So we've had the dollar tax rate for several years. This would be a continuation of that tax rate. And then this time next year, you guys would be in the same position in terms of flexibility. This is not handcuff your tax rate for more than one year, puts you right back in the same position, and kind of preserves that long-term flexibility to look at these projects and do so without increasing that tax rate. The last page, while there isn't a resolution to vote on tonight, these are the parameters, the financial parameters that you will see in the resolution if you decide to move forward and hold that hearing next board meeting. I do like to talk through them now, just so if there's any questions, we can talk about them now before you see the resolution. So maximum par amount of the bonds is 4.2 million. This is a not-to-exceed number. You can borrow any number up to 4.2 million. You cannot borrow more than 4.2 million. So that is a true maximum. We've estimated cost of issuance, those are upfront professional fees, at $150,000. My guess is that's conservatively high, based on what you've done here previously. But these truly are worst-case maximums, so we need to be conservative. That would leave a little over $4 million in estimated proceeds available for hard and soft project costs, the dollars going into the projects that you guys are looking at. Maximum interest rate, we've listed at 6%. If you were issuing these today, you're much closer to 4%. We're obviously not issuing these today. Interest rates can go up, they can go down. Again, this would be a worst-case interest rate. I don't anticipate us getting anywhere close to that, but things can change pretty rapidly. Maximum term of the bonds, we've listed at five years. We've shown that this can be paid back in one year. Again, we just give you a little bit of leeway here. If something should change between now and when you look at issuing these bonds, if you get to that point, you'd have the flexibility to pay these back over a longer period of time. Again, we don't anticipate that happening. $4.2 million at 6% comes up with an estimated interest cost of $618,625. That assumes that the interest rate is 6%. If and when these bonds are issued, we'd hope that would be much less, so that will come down substantially. And also, that number reflects a five-year repayment. If you pay this back over one year at a lower interest rate, that number is going to come down significantly, again, worst-case parameter, for purposes of the resolution. Maxim annual payment, $4.5 million. That's the highest payment you can have in any one year. That would be paying all of it off in one year, as we're currently anticipating. The net increase over the 2025 total tax rate, and we've just shown in the graph, this would not increase your tax rate from 2025 to 2026. The school's tax rate would stay at a dollar again in 2026. Two last pieces of information that we have to have per statute. The first is the school corporation's max annual payments. These are the, all of your annual payments in your debt service fund divided by your net assessed value, that is 0.57%. And then direct and overlapping debt, that is the school corporation's debt plus other taxing unit's debt that the taxpayers would see as a percentage of your net assessed value, and that is 0.83%. That's what I have tonight. I am happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
We're going to pause for just one second. I apologize. I'm not sure if your mic is on. You want to check that real quick?
Toby just said he fixed it.
Okay. Never mind, we got it fixed.
I can do it again.
Nope. I was going to say, if you want to take 20 seconds and give a brief overview, just so the public can hear it real quick, just the-
Yeah, I mean, I think the moral of the story is, the tax rate has been at a dollar for the last several years. This project, if it moves forward, can be repaid in a manner that would not increase the tax rate. So as you look at proposed projects, we certainly wouldn't want to increase that tax rate beyond what it's been the last several years, and this will not do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you got it.
We will now hear from Ms. Shannon New again about how the proposed project will be financed, as well as information about the effect on the typical property taxpayer.
I am going to refer to what Matt just shared with you, and that there is no increase to the taxpayer rate at this time. We are looking to ask for the 4.2 borrowing amount in which we will pay back for one year. We would like to use this for bus replacement and site improvements. We did just have a building assessment on the three elementaries and would like to use that based on need.
We will now open the public hearing. Remember, if you would like to speak, please sign in on the sheet, which was located over on the table. It's up here now. As I mentioned earlier, we will ask that you state your name and address, let me your comments to the proposed project and financing, keep any comments to three minutes, and avoid being repetitive if possible. I have the sign-in sheet, and I will begin calling names of those who are interested in speaking. No one has signed up for this hearing?
I didn't sign up. I didn't know what you were going to say.
Yeah, that's normally not the procedure for a hearing.
Can I sign up now?
The signup sheet was over there, yes. I was going to ask if anybody wants to. You signed up for the appropriations hearing. Right, yes, go ahead. If you'd like to speak, just state your name and address, and I'll have you sign in after you're done.
Thank you very much. I signed up. I didn't, I didn't know exactly what you were going to cover, so I was just going to wait and see. But I would like to have a little more information about the, you talked about site improvements to the three elementary schools, and I would like to know a little more information what that is.
So we did have, my, we did have the performance came in and went through all three of our elementaries and did an immediate within a year, within three years, and I believe that has not yet been decided on by the board. Has it?
No, not officially. This is, we had assessments done. Again, this was to keep the tax rate at the same rate, correct, Matt? And we have a list of potential things that we will address with this bond.
Okay. Later, could I get a list of the potential things that are on, that you're considering?
I'll let us know your question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's available, say, upon request, so there's no mystery here.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time regarding the preliminary determination hearing?
I can add just one thing, just to echo what I think was already said, but the, the list is not finalized. We're still in the committee of working through the final expenditures, I suppose, or projects we'll focus on, but my understanding and the immediate focus, like Shannon was describing, is that immediate, right-now, must-fix was, was really at the front of that line. So those are the types of items that we had in mind, if that's helpful.
There is no one else. Thank you to all who participated in the hearing. We appreciate your time and interest in the project and the future of our community. Please note that this is just the first step in the legal process. No board action is legally required at this hearing. Rather, this hearing is solely to hear public comment. The board will continue to work with the administration and its professionals to look for efficiencies to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. The board will hold a second public hearing in this boardroom on September 17, 2025, at 5:30 PM. And with that, we will adjourn the first preliminary determination hearing at 6:12. for the 2026 budget hearing, and I will turn it over to Ms. Kendra Franks, our business manager.
So tonight, I am bringing before the board the public hearing portion of the 2026 budget. For the 2026 budget, bus replacement plan and capital projects plan. On here, we are advertising for a budget in the education fund at $17 million, operations fund $8,100,000, debt service fund $6,251,410, and the rainy day fund at $1 million, for a total 2026 budget of $32,351,410. Do I have any questions around just the initial budget?
I might ask, how does that differ from last year?
So it's actually, the only thing that really changes from last year are our debt service fund. We are taking into effect the new bond that we are asking for. We had the first preliminary hearing, so the debt service fund reflects that payment within that. Now, obviously, this can change if the board chooses to go a different direction. I'm going to move on to the bus replacement plan. This, the bus replacement plan, it has stayed the same as it has been for many years now. We are asking in the 2026 timeframe that we purchased two buses to follow the bus replacement schedule. Within the next five years, we will do a continuation of replacing two buses every year at the determination of our Director of Transportation and Mr. Garing and our bus mechanic on the buses that have aged out and need replacement.
How many buses do we have, Kendra?
I do not know that off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
All right, that's okay. We'll find out.
Okay, I can find that out for you.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to the capital projects plan, I have listed a few of the capital projects that are on the, that are on the performance assessment that we received. These are within the now needs, and some of these items, I'm not going to read off all of them, some of them do include maintenance to our HVAC, maintenance to, and replacing some coolers within our cafeteria, and also some water lines at the buildings. There are a lot more projects on the list, but these are a few. Are there any questions? And also, in pursuant to Indiana Code, these are just items that exceed over $10,000 that can be done within the next three years. Any questions?
If no questions, we will now open the budget hearing for public comment. We have no one signed up. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Who would like to address the board? Please sign in below. Oh, you can do that. In order to address the board, individuals must sign in prior to start of the meeting. Individuals that have signed in are given three minutes to speak. A maximum of five individuals may address the board regarding the same topic, issue, or concern. Individuals are asked to avoid repetition and shall not be permitted to use the names of individuals, employees, or students. Personal attacks on employees or students will not be tolerated, and we are here to hear the public comments from our patrons. Please state your name and address.
Francis Brumbach, 12061 Dam Road, Laurel, Indiana, 47024, if you don't know the zip code there. First of all, when did you get limited on hearing comments from the public?
Excuse me?
The hearing comments, nobody's ever had to sign in for a hearing before. Why, why are we doing it now?
As I stated, anyone that did not sign in was still welcome to speak, just as you are right now.
Okay, but I mean, the three-minute limit and such doesn't make sense, but we can address that later. I guess my one question for Kendra is, you said it was $17.1 million for the education fund?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Mm-hmm.
And the current salaries of the teachers from the education fund is?
Currently, we are projected, everything out of the education fund, not just limited to salaries and benefits, is roughly around 16.6.
Okay, so, and that's in accordance with negotiations this year coming on? In other words, after they get their raise, will that be higher than the 16.6?
I do always ask for a little room, for wiggle room, a little bit of a higher budget just to allow for emergencies that may come up throughout the year, yes.
Okay, and then the other question I had was, the cafeteria fund was greatly diminished, and there was almost a half million dollars in that. Why weren't the coolers purchased under that?
We haven't addressed the cafeteria fund quite yet, but we will in the regular board meeting because of the balance of the cafeteria fund.
Fair enough. That's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If not, we will adjourn the 2026 budget hearing at 6:19. It is 6:20. We will now call to order the Franklin County Community School Corporation additional appropriations hearing. Call to order this public hearing, and I will, again, turn it over to Ms. Kendra Franks, our business manager.
I am asking the board to approve an additional appropriation. Well, I apologize, this is the public hearing portion. I am requesting the education fund an additional $1 million, and operations fund $500,000. Just for a little bit of an explanation, this is not, this is not increasing any tax dollars, this is not increasing, what I am specifically doing is asking the DLGF and the board that we spend, that we have the allowance to spend a little bit more dollars than what our budget from 2025 had allowed. This is primarily out of just looking forecasting and being a little close, and I am cautious, I'm conservative by nature, I will say that until I'm blue in the face, and this is just to make sure that we don't go over the limit that we were budgeted for and allowed for in the 2025 budget. Not saying that we will go over, but if we do, I want to make sure that we are legally allowed to with the DLGF.
Thank you. We have two signed up for public comment. Or is this what you were intending to speak? First up, we have Sarah Duffy from the public at 8098 St. Peters Road regarding additional appropriations. And again, if you'd like to address the board of school trustees, please sign in below, as you did. In order to address the board, individuals must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. Individuals that have signed in are given three minutes to speak. Maximum of five individuals may address the board regarding the same topic, issue, or concern. Individuals are asked to avoid repetition and shall not be permitted to use the names of individual employees or students. Personal attacks on employees or students will not be tolerated. And welcome, Ms. Sarah Duffy.
I just wanted, I'm Sarah Duffy, I just wanted a little more information, what you needed the million dollars for and what you needed the half million dollars for.
So it is purely just forecasting. We're looking out over, just our overall budget. We have salary and benefits that we're looking at. We also have miscellaneous building repairs. We also have contracting buses. We also have fuel costs, utilities, everything that can be paid out of education and operations. It does not specify what exactly we're low in, it's just the fund overall. We just want to make sure that we don't hit the limit that the appropriation that the DLGF, DLGS gave us for the '25 budget.
So you have the, you have that money available?
We do, yes, in a cash balance. We have the money available. We're just asking for the allowance to be able to spend it if needed.
If needed, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sarah. Next, we have Mr. Francis Brumbach.
I feel like Sarah gets to exceed me in everything I do these days. Tonight, I would like to address the board on the issue of transparency. If we pull up the agenda online to follow along, it's just absolutely bare bones. We have no idea who the new hires are, we have no idea about the financial numbers to follow along, and that makes it rather difficult for us to be able to make comments or to give input to board members before the actual occurrence of the meeting. It kind of, according to Niola, which is the policy advisory that you have, you should make the agenda as available as possible so that it's a well-informed public to what is going on in the meeting. And I don't understand why you would follow Niola for everything except for that. The second thing is, we're putting $4.2 million into buildings, and then at one point in time, we announced we were going to keep all the schools open, and my suggestion was wait till September and see what we can afford. Well, we're just now starting into that, and we still aren't aware of exactly what we're spending our money on. Are these things that, you know, are they furniture, is it whatever, to where people will be able to say, okay, if attendance were to drop, how could we recover some of these costs to where it would be feasible to do this? I spoke with Mr. Simonson at one point, and he had a rather intelligent idea, which I'm not going to disclose at this point, but I think it needs to be considered, and I'm sure he'll share it with the other board members. And then, the last thing really that I'd like to address is, not everybody wants a new school, and not everybody doesn't want a new school, but it is your job to project out the future of our school corporation, not this year, not next year, but five, 10, even 20 years, because those are the length of the bonds. And it's imperative that you look beyond the next year on how we're spending our money, because a deficit will cause us a huge problem. And right now, there's a deficit occurring, and we need to shore that up. I asked about the cafeteria fund earlier, but there's more to it than that. And then, really, what I'm asking you to do is put your thinking caps on, talk to Kendra, find out what she thinks, because she has a lot more experience than anyone up there, actually. So if you would be able to, be able to project out into the future and look beyond the next couple of years, I know we have a new board member, and basically, five of you have less than three years' service on the board, you have two with more, and they are in the education business. It would be very beneficial to kind of get together and bump heads and make sure that the pathway that we're going is the pathway we need to be. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything? Questions, comments? I'll start. This is my third year. The agenda that is posted now does meet legal requirements, as far as my understanding, and in my time, the agenda that we post now has more detail than it ever has in the past.
No.
From prior, public comments are over, your time is up. It has more detail than we have ever had in the past. We are doing our best to be transparent. As far as putting money into the schools, as it was stated earlier, we are looking- we are looking to put things into what is needed right now, first and foremost. The way we are structuring this is to keep our tax rate stable so that we are not hurting the property taxpayers. Um, we, I feel we listen to Kendra every time and put our full faith in her, so I hope she does not take that lightly.
Appreciate that.
Um, with that, is there anyone else with any other public comments?
Um, I, can I speak?
Yes.
Yes. Um, Kendra, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I do would like to have, um, some of your, um, comments on what Mr. Kaiser just said, and with the money that we have. If you are not prepared to do that at this point, that will be fine. If you don't want to do that at this point, that's fine, uh, we can always pick it up later, so.
Can you just clarify the question a little bit?
Okay, the question, um, the question to you is, um, we're getting this bond, and we're, we're kind of sprinkling the money to the, to all five schools. And can we maintain and keep these schools, say, in ten years? Can we, if we spend this money and get more money, then what's going to happen if a wall falls down someplace and we have no money to go there? And if you don't want to speak on this at this point, that is fine.
Um, no, that's fine, I may be brief. Um, what I will say is, we have a lot of unknowns coming with Senate Bill One, um, and the true effect of what that's going to look like with the credits, the tax credits. Um, I, we have to educate students, that is first and foremost our, our priority. Um, and I think that the buildings need to be functional for our students. Now, in what capacity that is, that is not my decision, that's the board's. Um, I don't know if that answers your question.
Partially, yes.
Okay.
Um, can I ask your definition of functional? And the reason I'm asking this is, every day, as we live in the world that we live in, technology is going up, 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 up.
Mm-hmm.
Some of these buildings do not have the wiring and the things that we need for the, um, broader technology that we would be putting or using or needing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and again, you don't have to ask, answer this, because you might not know where I'm going for, with this, but if we're going, I think wiring was mentioned, I think roofs were mentioned, I think buses were, that's not going to our education of our kids.
Hmm.
Um, how do you feel about that?
You're...
Am I, is that open-ended?
A little bit, a little bit, you're asking more opinion, opinion than facts.
I will say something.
Just, just now, just now, I'm sorry.
No, um, I was just going to say, you're asking for a little bit more opinion than facts, um, and financials. Um, I, I believe that there's a way to structure the bonds in the future to be able to support the students and maintain the buildings. Um, I, my concern will always be around, um, the ADM and the tax income that we get, the property tax money. Um, but that, I'm, I am conservative by nature. Um, so I, again, I, I don't know if that answers questions, but that's how I feel.
Well, I know that you're very conservative, and I wouldn't want anybody, I think I'm going to put you in charge of my checkbook, but, um, you're very, you do a very nice job, but, um, and yes, we don't have answers yet of the money that we're going to get, and it, I think it would be very foolish on our part to go out and say, okay, we're going to do X, X, and X, and Y, if we don't know how much money we have. So, um, I just kind of wanted what you thought financially.
Just like Matt showed earlier, we have a debt cliff coming. Um, I think for, and I know Mr. Brumbach talked about looking into the future rather than just the first few years out. Um, we, we are able to sustain this bond that we're doing, um, I, no question without that. Um, and I know that we have a debt cliff to be able to, to hold a, a bond in some form of capacity. Um, I, we haven't disclosed that amount to the public, but, um, I think that those are pretty set in stone. I think that what we receive as far as operational dollars is a little, what I have more concern around, um, because the, of the tax credits that our property tax owners are, are going to receive, um, and what we actually collect, I'm a little nervous about what our operations is going to receive, not our debt service.
And I may add, just working on the financial committee with Kendra, um, and as Matt Schumacher had pointed out, that is a big part of the reason why we're doing one year, and we're opting to do this for one year, and then look and revisit again in one year from now when we have a much clearer picture of the future, so we can maintain control.
I agree with that, Jessica. The only problem I think that we really need to get out to the people of Franklin County is, we've all talked about the tax rate, and we don't want that tax rate to go up, because our county is now putting another tax on us. So that is where we do not want to go, is to raise our taxes on anything. And so I think that really needs to be out there, that we're, we're not, no, we're going to stay right there with, with the taxes.
And I, and it probably best to bring this back to the topic at hand, but in the first hearing, that, I think that was made loud and clear, that was the point, was that we have all of our debt falling off, um, in the next upcoming couple of years, really. So we, we must do this to maintain that rate and keep, keep it under control.
And sometimes people don't understand that, you know, it's good to get out of debt, but in the schools, if we don't use our debt, if we don't use our debt in the schools, then we may lose that debt. That could go to, um, somewhere, something downtown or something of that, I mean, the county or so on. I'm sorry, you, whatever you wanted.
Jessica, got it, um, anything else?
Nope.
Any other public comment? If not, it is 6:35, and we will adjourn the additional appropriations hearing. It is 6:36. I will call to order the Franklin County Community School Corporation regular school board meeting for Monday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, we will start with the pledge allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. If you are able, would you please stand and face the flag? Uh, Kendra, since you like talking today, would you like to start the pledge allegiance?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where riches stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. We will start by a call of the role of the members of the board. It will be recorded who is present or absent. I'll let you do this, Shannon.
Kevin Kaiser.
Here.
Jessica Brennan.
Here.
Greg Burris.
Here.
Beth Foster.
Here.
Katie Holman.
Here.
Kim Simonson.
Present.
Randy Wilson.
Here.
Thank you.
Next up is celebrations with Ms. Shannon New, and I will let her take it over from here.
Franklin County Community School Corporation is proud to recognize Mr. Michael Kristoff. La-ha. He is our September Educator of the Month. His dedication to students, passion for teaching, and active involvement in the school community make him a truly deserving recipient of this honor. Mr. Kristoff is a history teacher at Franklin County Community High School and has been educating students for eleven years, all of them with FCCSE. He holds a bachelor's degree in anthropology from Purdue University, a bachelor's in social studies education from IU East, and a master's in legal studies from Northern Kentucky University. This recognition comes as a result of a heartfelt nomination from one of Mr. Kristoff's students. When asked why Mr. Kristoff deserved this recognition, the student shared, he is very supportive and always allows us to ask questions. He has a student-teacher relationship where we feel comfortable and confident in his class. He is also involved in many other things, such as coaching tennis and girls' basketball, being on an early college leadership team, and the social studies academic team. He is a good representation of what FCHS students look up to. They're pretty great.
Hmm.
It's pretty great. Outside the classroom, Mr. Kristoff stays active in the community. He coaches multiple sports, serves on academic teams, and works at Harbor Links Golf Course during the summer. In his downtime, he enjoys watching sports and movies, attending his son S.J.'s sporting events, traveling with fa, with friends and family, and golfing. When asked what he enjoys most about teaching, Mr. Kristoff shared, Franklin County has the best students, teachers, and staff around. I am proud to work with the teachers who value being experts in what they do and build positive relationships with students to help them succeed. I love knowing my son is getting a quality education at FCHS that will prepare him for college and life. I enjoy getting to know my students and seeing them find themselves throughout high school as they begin to prepare for adulthood. I have the greatest homeroom wise class ever. I always say I will keep teaching until I stop having fun every day, and they make teaching fun every single day. That's a great comment. So we would like to give a round of applause to Mr. Kristoff. This is for you, but don't take off yet, because we're going to take pictures as soon as I do.
Sounds good.
Before it's after.
All right.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. You got to come around.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And I'll reiterate what Shannon just said, we'll, we'll do these celebrations and a couple other hires, and we'll pause, take some pictures, and then, just if anyone that wants to leave at that point.
Franklin County Community School Corporation is pleased to recognize Ms. Beth Foltz. Ms. Beth Foltz is our media specialist assistant at Franklin County Middle School as the Support Staff of the Month for September. Ms. Foltz began her career with the district in nineteen ninety-nine, making this her twenty-sixth year of dedicated service. Throughout her time at Franklin County Middle School, she has earned a reputation for her positive attitude, kind heart, and unwavering commitment to students and staff. She was nominated for this recognition by a student who described her as someone you can trust to talk to, and praised her for always having a positive attitude in a way to make people's day better. The student added, if any student needed a helping hand, Mrs. Foltz is there to offer it, and I think that makes her an irreplaceable asset to our school. I agree. Beyond her professional contributions, Mrs. Foltz is an active member of the Franklin County Community. She is involved with the Whitcomb United Methodist Church, the Franklin County Machinery Club. Did I say that right? Machinary? Machinary? Machinery, got it, thanks. I'm going to work on my reading skills. And has served as a 4-H leader with the Whitcomb Boosters 4-H Club for thirty-eight years. Through her leadership, she has played a vital role in supporting local youth in organizing events at the fairgrounds. Promoting 4-H is a passion of hers, and she continues to mentor the next generation through her service. When she's not at school or volunteering, Mrs. Foltz enjoys spending time outdoors and with her family. She finds joy in mowing, planting flowers, gardening, canning vegetables, baking, crocheting, reading, and riding her quad. Most importantly, she values time spent with her husband of thirty-seven years, their three children, their spouses, and five grandchildren. We help them with their homework, 4-H projects, playing football, riding on the golf cart, and many other activities, she said. In her role as media specialist assistant, Mrs. Foltz supports student learning by encouraging a love of reading and creating a welcoming environment in the media center. She reflects on the relationship she has built with students over the years, sharing, the best part of my job is the children and the staff I work with. The children make me smile as much as I make them smile. Thank you for what you do.
Beth, is your dad's name? Dad, Janitor.
Thank you.
Hey, Mom and Dad would be proud.
Yeah.
Thank you, man.
Great job, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Quentin.
Quentin, yeah, Quentin.
Kevin, do we want to take pictures?
Quentin was down, fixing, putting on that step, going down the...
Or, actually, yeah.
Yep.
We'll go ahead and take a brief pause, take some pictures with the Educator of the Month, Support Staff of the Month, and, and your family or whoever you brought with you. Real quick, over here by the wildcat, uh, Shannon and Cheryl, take some pictures.
One with you and then one with your family.
Yes.
Would you like to introduce your family to us?
Uh, so this is my son, S.J., um, my aunt, Mary Ellen is here, and Patty's... Nominated me for this.
Oh, we have a team of four people. Thank you to extra boys. Anthony.
How's Mary Ellen? How's Mary Ellen?
And you are welcome to stay, free to leave for the remainder of the meeting, if you want to stay and... Listen, you're more than welcome.
That's Mary Ellen.
Your family have a lot to join?
Related to him? I don't know.
Sister, that's George's sister. Mary Ellen, one of the... Um, she has no internet either.
Here you go.
I couldn't get in either.
It's okay. I, I just have my other stuff up, because I had to go home.
I'm, I'm just going to look out for his. A copy.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda items, which includes minutes, expenditures, and resignations. This was in your board packet. We are looking for a first, second discussion, and board action.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items.
Ms. Brennan, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Foster, any discussion? No discussion, we have a first and a second, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Six, those opposed? Zero.
Yeah, I was going nice.
One abstention. Yes, Mr. Simonson was not here at the last meeting. Um, next is personnel, new hires, and I will let Shannon read these off.
We have Kayleen Madden as a paraprofessional at BES and as a bus driver, Deanna Jackson, media specialist assistant at BES, Deanna Madden, media specialist assistant at LES, Amanda Denoma, cafeteria at FCMS, and...
High school.
FCHS, sorry.
Mine does say CHS, right?
And then Nicholas Messer.
So we have those four, looking for a first, second discussion, and board action.
Also move.
Mr. Simonsen, do we have a second? Ms. Wilson, any discussion? No discussion, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. More Personnel, New Hires?
Nicholas Messer, Assistant Principal at FCHS.
And again, looking for a first, second discussion and board action.
I'll move to approve Nicholas Messer.
Ms. Brennan? Second, Ms. Wilson, any discussion? No discussion, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Four, those opposed?
I'm abstaining. I'm abstaining.
Any opposed? Nope. Abstention? Raise your right hand. Three abstentions. Motion is approved.
I would.
Congratulations to all the new hires.
And I would like to take this time to introduce everyone to Nicholas Messer. He is here in the audience with us. He, would you like to tell us a little about yourself, Nick?
Yeah, I'll stand up.
Sorry. They can't hear you online if you're not at the mic, and then the reason I hesitated on pausing earlier, we'll get your picture.
First and foremost, thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it. I've been here two weeks, it's been great. Kids have been phenomenal, staff's great. You know, just excited to get going now that I'm official. That always takes a weight off the shoulders, so thank you again, I appreciate that. Jen and I have three kids, and we reside in Decatur County. So I've been, I think it's my 20th year in education, administrator for, school board at one point, head of a teachers' union at one point, so I like to bring those well-rounded experiences and put them to use here in Franklin County. So again, thank you for the opportunity, and I guess any questions?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Come around. Sarah, take your picture.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Next we have Personnel, Extracurricular.
You ready?
Ms. Shannon?
We have at BES, Adam Tebby, 5th grade Boys Basketball. Curtis Roush, 6th grade Boys Basketball. Dowd, Volunteers, 6th grade Boys Basketball. Jonathan White, Volunteer 5th, 6th grade Boys Basketball. LES, Rebecca Lee, she's a cheer coach. MCS, Sean Landerman, 6th grade Boys Basketball. James Kissed, 5th grade Boys Basketball. Season Martin, 6th grade Cheerleading. And Jessica Hettersmeyer, 6th grade Cheerleading. FCMS is Jason Allen, 6th grade Boys Basketball.
That's 8th grade.
I'm sorry, 8th grade. Can't read today, apologize. FCHS, Brett Roush is Head Varsity Baseball. Derek Stang, Varsity Assistant Baseball. Craig Hurdle, JV Assistant Baseball. Eli Buck, Freshman Baseball. Nick Buck, Volunteer Baseball. Michael Kristoff, Head Varsity Girls Tennis. Matt Purleyberg, Head Varsity Softball. Philip Miller, Varsity Assistant Softball. Ryan Bischoff, JV Assistant Softball. Crystal Cruda, Freshman Softball. Kelly Feller.
Flur.
Flur. Volunteer Softball. Ryan Kane, Volunteer Softball. Kelsey Purleyberg, Volunteer Softball. And Melissa Graff, Volunteer Softball. There is also a long list for club and class sponsors as presented in your board packets.
And again, looking for a first, second discussion and board action.
I will move to approve.
Mr. Simonsen, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Brennan, any discussion?
Well, I'd like to say something. It pleases me to see we have so many volunteers, I mean, it's amazing. I mean, you look at some of these sports, a lot of them aren't getting paid, so it's a special call of duty. That's impressive, I think.
Anything else? If not, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven oh. Next, we have Financial Reports, and back to Ms. Kendra Franks.
Could you hear from me some more? The education fund balance as of August 31st was $6,951,029.77. A year ago, this balance was $5,887,266.25. The operations fund balance as of August 31st, sorry, August 31st, 2025, Sorry, 33 cents. A year ago, this balance was $4,212,164. The rainy day balance as of August 31st was $4,164,641.37. A year ago, this balance was $1,068,712.84. The investment interest earned year-to-date as of August 31st was $315,522.57. This is compared to $435,216.48 a year ago. I would also like just to inform the board that because the weekend was the month change, we did not receive our FCN interest because it came on September 1st. It's just how their new accounting, their banking system works. We did receive it, I just couldn't account for it in August data because it came September 1st. So that'll be reflected on next board meetings.
That happened in May as well, didn't it?
It did, yes. It's any time that the month change is over a weekend, is what I've been told.
Moving on to Cafeteria Report.
The cafeteria fund balance as of August 31st, 2025, was $5,156.14. This is compared to $513,997 a year ago. The latchkey fund balance.
Question, please.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, talk to us about why there's such deviation in the amount of money there.
So I will say, she, I say she, I'm referring to our Director of Food Service, received a reimbursement from the Summer Food Program in the amount of roughly $100,000. But again, it came in September, so that's not reflected here. In addition to that, I believe she's tried a few different things, menu changes. She tried, and I think I can very well say that it didn't necessarily go the way that she wanted to. So now she's going back to a cycle menu, she's making some changes. Being new in the department, I think she tried a few different things, and you have to figure out what works and what doesn't.
Yeah, I know Jessica, and I think she does a good job overall.
Absolutely.
In fact, I spoke on her behalf once.
Yes.
Does the, the meals aren't the same at all the schools, are they? Are they scheduled the same? Or they just, the school runs their own meals, something like?
No, they're the same.
Are they the same? Okay.
Now, I do know like the middle school and the high school, they have other options at that level, other than just the tray menu.
Taipei, or, yeah.
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 Okay.
Yeah.
That was my question. Okay. I have a question, Kendra, so none of this cafeteria money was moved to another fund?
No.
From last year?
No. Kendra, can, what else can cafeteria money be spent on besides food? Some, some things that go on in the cafeteria, right? And wages? Yes, it's wages, benefits for those employees. It is repairs and equipment, food purchases, and there may be miscellaneous things that are needed for the cafeteria just as far as products. I'm talking like spatulas, things like that, right, that are needed. I don't know if you want to call that equipment. Equipment's big purchasing, but along those lines, anything within that realm. Repairs to equipment have been a heavy cost as well, labor, labor costs have increased. And as we've seen, we've had some issues with a few of our, our equipment pieces, coolers, fridges, things like that, that have been worked on as many times as they can, and I think now they're at the replacement time.
When we redid the cafeteria at the high school, some of this cafeteria money was used for like the tables and the chairs and the floor and...
It was.
Okay.
At the time, it, that amount needed to be spent down. So it was used for helping to remodel, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Move on to latchkey. The latchkey fund balance as of August 31st was $14,093.20. This is compared to $21,735.41 a year ago.
Again, this is for discussion only, any other discussion on the cafeteria report or latchkey report. If not, we will move on to Statements from the Public and Employees. If you'd like to address the Board of School Trustees, please sign in below. In order to address the board, individuals must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. Individuals that have signed in are given three minutes to speak. A maximum of five individuals may address the board regarding the same topic, issue, or concern. Individuals are asked to avoid repetition and shall not be permitted to use the names of individual employees or students. Personal attacks on employees or students will not be tolerated. We do have one signed up, and it is Mr. Rob Allen. If you'd like to step up to the podium.
Well, and I'd like to thank the board for letting me come back again. I was here in February. My name is Rob Allen, lifelong Brookville resident until a couple of years ago when I moved to Connersville. So don't hold that against me. But no, I'm here again to speak on behalf of the O'Brien family, which graciously let me do this, about the naming of the soccer field after a former coach and still very active and everything, Bob O'Brien. And just a couple of items of business. I sent a list of information to Mrs. Sparks today. Do you folks happen to have that information?
We do, it was emailed to us.
And it's a long list, so we're not going to cover all that. Two reasons, but for one, to answer a question that there might have been a little confusion on. What we are proposing to be named after Bob is the grass soccer field, which used to be, and still will be used a couple of games this year, as the varsity field. But the majority of the time now, we are using Wildcat Field, the turf, multipurpose football track and everything, and it's a wonderful facility. So we have not been, I think there might have been a little confusion, maybe we was asking to name that after Bob. No, we were going for the grass field, which now is basically used for practicing and very, very much in use for the very popular youth league, which Bob has served with and ran for over 50 years. And if I, I was going to use my phone for a timer, but it's getting blown up by pictures of my grandkids, so if I get a little close, just let me know. So anyway, folks, a few items. The list that we sent you, that Amy compiled and I added a few things to, was just Bob's overall coaching history. In no way, shape, or form, and some of that was BHS also, along with Franklin County High School. So it's an extensive list. All of that is just a history in case anybody on the board didn't really know how involved he really was. But those are just essentially the hardcore facts. Now, the second item that we wanted to press on, well, I'll just make this the point right now. Most of you know Bob. You know his activity in the community, not only as a wonderful educator, wonderful coach, and never-ending time giver. That continues on, no matter what, to this day. When he was done being head coach of soccer, he still was driving buses, he still was working on the fields. His volunteer and his commitment has never stopped, and to this day, it's going on. And I do think he has some ideas of maybe stepping down, running the youth league, which a few years, we gave him a break, but he was still our number one guy. I mean, let's face it, he is soccer in Franklin County. Now, I understand, and we understand, that naming a field is a difficult thing. You only got so many fields. There have been lots and lots of wonderful coaches and things that have played through the Brookville High School years and the Franklin County years. So it's a hard decision. You just can't take that lightly, and we understand that. But, but in Bob's case, I really truly believe, yes, eventually soccer would have came, but he was the man who brought it here. His league started with neighborhood kids in the late 70s. It blossomed up when Franklin County became Franklin County High School, and soccer was starting to come in the area, only in a few places. He was able to get that as a club sport and then as a co-ed varsity sport. And later, through the growth of it, we had girls' teams and boys' teams. And then when Bob would step away, if there was ever a jam, and we have former athletic directors here, who could you go to if that coach resigned? Bob O'Brien again. That's how I got into coaching with him. He kind of groomed me as being one of his apprentices, and I was very thankful for that. And so again, I'm not trying to be repetitive. As far as naming fields in the area, there are quite a few high school fields named after former coaches or somebody who's very influential. I've involved some with Hagerstown High School, like they have Lloyd Michaels Field, this, that, and the other. There's Live Old Field in Richmond, Nearie Field, Lawrenceburg, there's quite a few. Actually, Lawrenceburg Football Stadium, Kim, or correct me on that, I actually think it has two names. I think it is such-and-such a stadium in Nearie Field. So they have found ways to incorporate several names that were very influential in Lawrenceburg football. That's just an example. Now, years and years from now, there could be somebody become very influential in soccer or something at Franklin County, and we hope so. And Bob is so unselfish that he would be like, hey, incorporate everybody who's done anything that can help. But folks, he is the true father of Franklin County soccer. And again, we're not asking that the new field, the new turf field be named after him. There are lots of people who that could be named after in time, but that's such a multi-use purpose, you have to be in consideration of that. We do have a field named after a former coach at Franklin County High School. I was proud, and I think I'm the only one maybe here, they got to play for him for four years, and that's Coach Hughes. In the situation, Bob is very similar to Coach Hughes, if not, but maybe for a longer period. And Bob with the youth league, it's very different. Coach Hughes loved that field. He worked on that field. I think he liked working on it as much as he liked coaching. And Bob, trust me, it's not always fun when Bob would pull out a thing of twine and we would start measuring off a soccer field and painting the different spots. I got to be with him on that, I'm sure Amy and probably Casey also. So I was always like, oh boy, here we go again. But anyway, Bob's commitment, he's there for everything. The grunt work, not publicity, not anything else. He's just the backbone of things. And I know I've probably already passed my three-minute, so I'll leave you with just a little bit of way to think of this. If you was to take a poll about soccer, and granted, soccer's not football, it's not baseball, it's not basketball in Franklin County. But if you was to take a poll and say, name something about soccer, if you went and polled the county or people in the town, Bob O'Brien's name would come up before Pele, for those of us that remember Pele, Beckham, Alex Morgan. More people know of Bob O'Brien in this county than they know of soccer legends. And that really speaks well. But besides being popular or being known for the sport, let's just really taking, I ask you, just taking consideration of love, dedication, unselfishness, definitely not financial gain. This guy put out a pocket, as many coaches have done here and administrators. I mean, come on, it really does. It's about love in this county. Yeah, people can butt heads or disagree on things, but we, we, we love the county. We love the activities, we love things for the kids. And Bob is about love of soccer, and I'm not going to get emotional. My voice is always bad. But he has opened the door for a lot of us that played for him, that coached with him, that are friends with him in an unselfish and committed way. And we really hope that the board can consider all these things. And we understand there are worries about naming a field. We respect that. But please take in consideration that entire 50-year body of work. You cannot go wrong with this, okay? There's always can be a squeaky wheel somewhere. Oh, why that, why that? But trust me, folks, it is a decision that will be very well received if approved. I'm not trying to bully or coerce or anything like that. But this is something that will be received wonderfully by the community. Not just as a sports thing, not just about wins and losses, but about a man's commitment along with his wife, along with his family, the sacrifices, the love, the time that was spent to bring a game of soccer and other things that he was involved in to help a lot of kids' lives and just make life good around Franklin County. So I know I went over, thank you for letting me speak again. Do you have any questions for me?
He just won, was that a state or national award he just won?
The one was the state, wasn't it, Amy? Yes, that was the state, the Presidential Soccer Award. And also, can I add one last story that'll take 10 seconds? One of his young coaches, while he was at Ball State, is active at Cooperstown, the Baseball Hall of Fame, which Bob's granddaughter Lauren goes to pretty religiously with her father and now with her kids. They met up with him somehow. And he was like, I coached Bob O'Brien. I was a young coach at Ball State. He was one of my best. And Bob would say not because their record wasn't so good. But he was like, if that everything ever happens that he would happen to have that field named after him, let me know. I'm coming from Cooperstown, New York. So this man's got a wonderful reputation, folks. So please take into consideration our request. Understand that it is for the grass field, not the turf field. And we just ask for your consideration and if you ever have any more questions.
I have one.
Yes.
I know that they're starting their youth soccer. They've start, I think, what is this, week two? Week two. Somebody, somebody said something to me about they had over 300, is that? Over 300 youth soccer?
Yes. And back when the years when I was helping Bob and I was chairman of it for about six years, we averaged about 350 kids. Now, again, it's a rec league. It's not for just select soccer players. If you have never kicked the ball in your life, you can come play. It doesn't matter. But trust me, we used it as a feeder program while I was coaching. And thank God we had it. It sure has put a lot of smiles and people used to say, well, you shouldn't give a medal to everybody. Well, by God, and I can speak for my daughters, the eight years they've played in it, actually nine. And when they got that medal at the end of that last week, it might be freezing cold. They were pretty darn happy. It's brought a lot of smiles. Not to be all kumbaya and this, that, and the other, but it's made people really happy in Franklin County that soccer program has. Any other questions, folks? Well, thank you for letting me go a minute or two over. I love, thank you very much.
One thing, Rob. I just want you to know, it's not fallen by the wayside. It's still in the process. I just want to make sure it is done correctly. And I will let Dustin know, we've talked about it. He wants to get with you and, you know, make sure you are up to date on where they are with it.
Thank you.
Yeah. By no means is this, this has not been forgotten.
Okay, I appreciate it. We know you all got a lot of busy things to do and big decisions and impact a lot of things. And, and again, we just wanted to reiterate and make sure that there were no loose ends about questions, maybe which field we were asking about. And, and we wanted to provide you with his history. So, and I'm sorry I had to rewrite it in hand. Hope you can read it. Amy had it on a, on a website that I couldn't print off today. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Your consideration and please reach out to us anytime.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks for sharing that.
That was all we had. Old business, we have none. So we will move to new business with the FCCSE Communications and Media Relations Coordinator job description.
Superintendent Dustin Gary is requesting approval of the Communication and Media Relations Coordinator job description.
This is for a new position and I will just add first. Cool, I'll add it in later. But do we have first, second discussion, board action?
I so move to approve the position.
Ms. Wilson? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Brennan, any discussion? So what I was going to say, I just wanted to add and make sure everyone was aware, this is a position that is going to be, we're getting grants and donations and being reimbursed through the foundation by the redevelopment commissions, both Franklin County and Brookfield. So I just want to throw that out there. This is not correct, correct, Kendra? We're not, this is not going into our budget?
No, correct. After every, it is a part-time position and after every payment, every month, we are submitting for reimbursement from the foundation.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have a question, but I do have a, something to say. I don't know if, if anybody's familiar with Daniel Ward, but he has done a lot.
We haven't gotten there yet. We don't know who did it yet. We have to prove the position first.
Sorry. I'm so excited.
All right.
Just can't hide.
We have a first and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand, seven oh. Next on the agenda is personnel new hire.
We would like to hire Daniel Ward for the Communication and Media Relations Coordinator at FCCS.
And we'll move fast and get to Beth. First and second? We have a first by Ms. Foster, second by Ms. Wilson. Any discussion, comments?
Yes. This guy's awesome. He is, he does youth sports. He, anywhere, he's got his little doohickey thing. He's, I mean, he's screening and, and I, I can't, I don't understand what he does, but I mean, it's just awesome what he, he's such an asset. He will be such an asset for us.
I've had people reaching out to me to get in touch with him just so, to help promote things.
Yes.
So I think it's going to be a very positive thing.
I do have something I want to say. I just want to say that I'm, I'm thankful for that position because I know too, he does a lot with promoting our sports and doing the games and stuff. And for some people, they can't always make it to or get out to see the games. So it's nice to be able to be up, for them to be able to watch their grandkids or their, their kids play sports and do different things like that. So I appreciate it.
Anything else? We have a first and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand, seven oh. Next, not last. Next is additional appropriation.
I came to the board earlier with the budget, or with the hearing for the additional appropriation. And now I'm coming to the board to ask for approval of the additional appropriation request for the Education and Operations Fund.
Again, this was from our earlier public hearing and we are looking for a first, second discussion and board action.
I'll move to approve the request for the additional appropriations.
Ms. Brennan, do we have a second? Mr. Simonsen, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, seven oh. Moving on to other appointment for the Franklin County Public Library Board.
A recommendation to appoint Mr. Phil Harsh to serve on the Franklin County Public Library Board. Phil currently serves in this capacity. This is a four-year term.
Again, first, second discussion and board action.
I move that we put Phil on there.
Ms. Foster, do we have a second? Ms. Wilson, any discussion?
Is Susan on board with this? The director at the library?
Yes, yes. See, he's on there now.
Yeah, I realize that. I just wanted to be sure Susan was on board.
Yes.
Anything else? We have a first and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand, seven oh. Superintendent's report, or in this case, the Assistant Superintendent's report from Ms. Shannon New.
I'll keep it short and sweet. Our fall sports are off and running and off to a great start. Also, I wanted to share the increase in our I-Read scores. From last year, I'll start with Brookville. Brookville last year was 81% passing this, let me rephrase. In '24, or in '23, was it 81% passing? The scores that just came in were at 87.7%. For BS, for Laurel, previous was 74.3%. Now it is 81.3%. Mount Carmel was originally 100%. They had one student that didn't.
Yeah.
Only one. And that means they're 97.3% with a total increase of 88.7% for Franklin County overall from the previous 83.3%. So we will continue working and striving to increase, but that is a tremendous gain for our third graders and our teachers. It is given in third grade, but it is a kindergarten to third grade process to get our kids where they need to be. And those are my, my report.
Thank you.
They're all on the same track, aren't they, Shannon? I mean, as far as the educational material.
Yes, yeah. They use the same curriculum or even in alignment with our tier one, our tier two, and our tier three.
When was the assessment?
When was it? It was in March.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Next is legislative updates. No legislative updates for, now's the time of year of trying to figure out the after effects of everything. The only thing I'll add again, reiterate, I don't think it's too late. The fall ISBA conference is this coming Monday and Tuesday, if anybody is still interested in going. Does anyone have anything that they want to add to legislative updates? Future agenda requests. Do we have any future agenda requests? Yes, Mr. Simonsen?
Yeah, I'd like for us to establish, establish a specific timeline to evaluate the superintendent. And if you would, Kevin, I never did read, get the original packet, so just have Kendra just shoot that to me.
We will, we will have to schedule executive session, so I will reach out to each of you and we will get that scheduled.
Yes.
So everybody can be there.
I believe I saw that was posted on, wasn't that posted today? Where'd I see that? I have no internet. I just closed it, I'm so sorry.
I don't believe so, but yes, we, we do need to get that and we will get that scheduled as soon as possible. So keep that in mind, be thinking about what days of the week you guys might have free. Recognition and acknowledgements. If not, we will adjourn at 7:20. Next regular school board meeting is 6:00 PM, Monday, October 13th, 2025, at the Franklin County Administration Building, right here. Thank you, everyone.
Just a reminder, second hearing for the bond is on Wednesday, the 17th.
Yes. Did everybody hear that?
Five thirty.
Five thirty, Wednesday, the 17th, again?
Yes, yes, yep.